It is 6 o'clock and I apologize, we are having technical difficulties. So it'll be just a few minutes before we can all see our agendas and things. Commissioner Graff, will you leave us in the flag?
Sure, please.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Camerota?
Here.
Commissioner Dever?
Here.
Commissioner Graff?
Here.
Commissioner Santos?
Present.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Here.
Vice Chair Mattingly?
Here.
And Chair Stevens?
Here.
Okay, I guess we'll go into oral communications. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. Please provide your name and address for the record in order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person that's been established. Government Code Section 54954.2 prohibits the Planning Commission from discussing or taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Madam Clerk, do you have any written requests?
I don't have any requests in here and I don't think I see anybody with their hand up on Zoom.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the oral communications and bring it back to the commission. We don't have any, let's see. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. If we have no discussion from the commission, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the June 10th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
And it's a tie. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, public hearings. A discussion and consideration of a minor conditional use permit number six at 24403-24411 Narbonne Avenue to determine the extent and nature of any new parking for the conversion of an 1,160 square foot portion of the 6,800 square foot storage building into a retail store for a property located within 500 feet of a municipal parking lot in the downtown commercial DC zone and mixed-use overlay. Laura, I believe you're doing the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Stevens, good evening, commission and members of the public. So, the DC zone has a special provision for when a site does not meet the required parking standards. And if the site is within proximity of a city parking lot, the Planning Commission may determine the extent and nature of the required onsite parking. So, this project may be a little bit of a review, but I'll go through the designations here. The site is zoned downtown commercial, it has a mixed-use overlay. Feed stores in the DC zone are not specifically mentioned, so that makes the site non-conforming. But the project itself, which is intended for retail space, is an allowable use and brings the project or the property further into compliance with the municipal code's designation. The general plan designation is commercial and it has a mixed-use overlay as well, and clearly the project is commercial in nature. This site is a mid-block site. It has two driveways and it spans over three properties. It has three buildings on the site. The front, I should, excuse me, 2403 is the feed store. Behind it is a former residence that's now used for storage. And the southerly building is presently all storage. The applicant is proposing to convert a small portion of the southerly building. This is an interior shot. It once had a storefront and that storefront will be restored. This is the current site plan. The applicant will have five parking spaces on the site. There will be entrance on either the northerly or southerly driveway and vehicles will park through and, I should say, enter and exit through their stall space. As mentioned, the use is considered legal non-conforming. It has been there for more than 100 years. The Planning Commission heard this application, but it was then, prior to a zone text amendment, site plan review 1216, which expired. At that time, it was determined that a feed and grain use would have a parking ratio of 1 to 400 square feet. Retail space has a parking ratio of 1 to 300 square feet and as such, the proposed use is more intense and the property would need to provide additional parking. However, as aforementioned, the PC, Planning Commission, can determine the nature and extent of any new parking if a project is within 500 feet of a municipal lot. This table summarizes what we just covered. And here are the municipal lots within 500 feet of Lamita Feed. There are three lots, there's over 50 spaces in these lots. The northerly lot is one property away. Staff observed numerous days and found that there was, in the morning and in the PM time, at least a space during the business's operating hours available. So this property sits, I should say, this business occupies three separate lots. Like the previous entitlement, staff has put a condition of approval for the lots to be tied. Here is a proposed elevation. And they're going to balance the retail store and proposing to put windows on the southerly half of the building or third of the building to balance the facade. The existing barn doors will stay. So the MCUP findings, and they're further elaborated in the resolution, clearly there is nearby municipal parking lots and they have the capacity to absorb the demand for the additional parking space. The long-term envisioned impact is, you know, this is a mixed-use area, it's designated as such. Mixed-use areas tend to have more pedestrian activity and fewer vehicle trips. That said, staff has added a condition of approval that says that the retail use is, future retail uses is to be a complement to the feed store because this way it ensures that the number of vehicle trips and hence demand for parking will be insignificant at best, or at worst, depending on your perspective. So this application is exempt from CEQA, the common sense exemption. There's no new construction going on, no real trip impact that can be foreseen, so the common sense exemption applies. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the minor CUP subject to conditions and confirm the categorical exemption. The owner is here, we received no calls about this application. The owner is here and the applicant architect is online. May I answer any questions?
Is that attached to the residence?
No, that was going to be inside the storage building and the architect, I had a conversation with him, I think it was, and I'll let him dress this and give you the specifics, but it was triggering some building improvements that were substantial in nature because of that vehicle inside the building and then the entitlement expired.
And the residence that's now being used for storage?
That's just being used for storage and what is the, it's parking?
It's a designated residence, is it not? I'm not trying to say that I don't want them to-
Are you in terms of building code or in terms of use?
Use.
In terms of use, it's been converted. So it's no longer a residence, it has not been for some time. And so if it wanted to become a residence again, they would have to apply for a CUP for mixed use.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. So at that point, any upgrades to make it safe would then have to go before us and building safety?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
I just want to point out, unless anybody didn't notice on the actual report, that references.
Condition number 14, which is the tie-in condition for the three lots, if it goes beyond tonight, it should actually say condition number 17, not 14.
On the staff report?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Other than that, I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have questions before? Okay, with that being said, the applicant is here, would you like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your consideration. We feel really fortunate, Lamita Feed is its 105th year and we're, you know, trying to do a tiny bit of expansion. Generally, at 105 years, you're thinking about going the other direction, but.
Number 100, thanks.
Well, we have a lot of people that come by and they bring their grandkids now and say that they came by with their grandparents when they were grandkids, so it's a generational place, so I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a question now that he spoke. The architectural design, the design of the actual building is going to remain as if it was a historical site, correct?
No.
I mean, you're not going to do anything with the actual look of the property as it has been known and loved by all of us for many years?
The first picture that was up is actually a watercolor that was done of the building before they took out the, it housed two storefronts in its life. The left-hand side was the fire warden's office, the right-hand side was Lamita Feed. And so we're going to bring it back to, essentially that. Yeah, no, it's not going to change at all.
The barn doors will be closed.
The barn doors will be closed, yes.
Okay, that's all I had. I just wanted to make sure that the integrity, I know that we're trying to keep it within alignment with the downtown plan and all that good kind of stuff, but that's kind of a, especially, I mean, that's a dear and near place to me in my heart. So I just want to make sure that the look of it is protected to stay the same.
Yeah, no, the outside will stay the same and thankfully, the design on the inside was approved so that we could show the beautiful 110-year-old trust work that's in there. So that will be observable as well.
Thank you. Okay, if the commission has no other questions, I will now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this?
George Kivitt.
Good evening, Chair Stevens and commissioners. I appreciate your attention. I think I know which way the commission's leaning on this, but I just want to tell you, we love Lamita Feed, my whole family, and it really provides a lot of character to the downtown area, I'm sure you're all aware of that. And it's just a minor portion that's going to be converted to retail, so I don't think the parking impact will be, you know, I don't really think there will be any parking impact. And it's great we have the municipal properties to help support on that north side of Lamita Boulevard. You know, one nice thing though, this is going to help pull in additional retail sales. Equestrian users are typically higher income, you know, folks, and I sold an equestrian property in Long Beach, actually, earlier this year. They had 10 stall stables in the back and they have used Lamita Feed for years. They've sold since sold the property, but the people that bought it, they're still going to be using Lamita Feed for a lot of their product. But this is going to generate additional sales tax revenue, it's going to be real nice. I walk over, I personally use Lamita Feed, so I'm glad they're going to be here long term. Me and my dog, we walk over there on a fairly regular basis, it's just a few long blocks from my house and she likes the dog biscuits there, the staff treat her real well, sometimes she gets an extra little treat when she's there. And I like the touch with the windows and keeping the architectural, you know, style, but having those windows on the other side, that'll balance it out while still keeping, you know, the look there. And that's about it. I think I know which way you guys are going to vote, but I strongly recommend approval on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kivitt. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers out there? Okay, so being no other speakers, I will now close the public hearing. Is there any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Camerota?
Nope.
Yep, yep.
I don't want to.
You got, okay. Commissioner Graff?
Just for information, Laura, this document is what we approved before with the exception of the one parking space, is that correct? That we previously approved?
Thank you, Commissioner Graff, for clarifying. It is identical, but for that one parking space. And I do want to echo, even though the findings don't say this or ask us this, Mr. Kivitt raised a very important point about fostering or having businesses in the city that are export in nature, you know, considering the quality of the business that is getting a modification in this parking, as well as considering its historical component. We could always have high parking, but no use. So there is this benefit to the provision and also, you know, and supporting reasons outside of what the findings ask us for recommending approval.
Thank you, Laura. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, on that whole line, we've watched development in many communities over the years, everybody takes a stab at revitalizing their downtown and we're going to make it this, we're going to make it that. And the most successful ones that I've ever seen are the ones that maintained what made their downtown to begin with. You know, San Luis Obispo, their downtown is probably one of the most successful things that has survived every economic crisis because they kept it the way it was. And everything that they brought in, they brought in to fit in that. And so you're absolutely correct, that property could have a use that could have more parking and not be successful. And, I mean, we can call it a historical component, but if you look at the number of people that live in the city of Lamita that have lived here for many, many years, just, yeah, a couple. When I was nine years old, living on 240th Street, I raised rabbits for food and sold them. I had a lot of them, started with one, ended up with a lot of them, and I got all my feed there. And it was, get on your bike and hustle down to Lamita Feed to get your rabbit food. You know, I remember the bins, we used to scoop it up and the smell of the rabbit food was, I can smell it today. So things like this is like a no-brainer. It's just, we have to keep these cultural elements in our downtown if it's going to be successful and bring more like that that wrap around it. The only suggestion I'd ever have is down the road, put a restaurant on there and call it Lamita Feed. Maybe the house could be a sandwich shop, you know? Yeah, I want a piece of that one. Anyway, thank you.
No problem. I just want to reiterate on that too. I mean, we try and move forward and we try, and as everyone here knows, you know, I slid over this, I think we were reducing the parking only because there's three parking spots, I mean, and it's, and I don't really see, I mean, hopefully this will bring more business and generate more business, but the pedestrian factor and all that good kind of stuff, so that's where we stand. So if there is no further discussion, can I get a motion?
I will make that motion, but before I make it, I also want to compliment Jim Smith for his architectural renderings to keep it in that same style that has been mentioned many times before as a historical building.
Absolutely, thank you.
So I will make the motion to approve Minor Conditional Use Permit number six.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, it passes. So I guess this is a good time to, I think we're going into the scheduled matters, to introduce our interim community and economic development director, Adrienne Fernandez. Welcome. And I don't know if you have the communications regarding the city council actions or not.
The communications regarding city council actions, I may, I don't have those with me today, but I will make sure to bring those next time. So, but I just wanted to introduce myself. So my name is Adrian Fernandez. I know I met most of you already today via telephone. You know, I come from the city of Malibu, worked there for 16 years, and I, this is my third week with the city and, you know, there's a huge learning curve and I'm trying to learn as much as I can and I'm learning about the history today and I met with the owner about this property and I knew the significance of the site. But there's much more to learn, obviously, and I will need your help and the community to help me, bring me up to speed. There is a couple announcements I want to make. So one of the announcements is that on August 26th, the city will have an open house and this is to talk about the general plan. And in that open house, we are going to have some exhibits as well as we're going to make the consultants available to answer questions that the community members may have regarding the general plan update. The other announcement is also regarding the general plan and that is that in September, we have two scheduled meetings. And the first meeting is a regular Planning Commission meeting, second will be a special hearing to where we're bringing the general plan update to the Planning Commission for review and a recommendation to the city council. And so I just wanted to invite all members of the community to come and, you know, voice their potential concerns and provide their comments on the general plan, which is a very important document for the city.
Thank you for that, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. So, other matters, just, I guess that was the announcement. Commissioners, Commissioner Camerota, do you have anything to?
I do know that the nine units south of PCH on Oak Street are, I don't want to say this, I don't want to say weeks, but certainly months, a few, they're up. I mean, and if you haven't driven by there, you really should, they look good. They still have their right-of-way improvements to do and stormwater inspection, but if you recall that project, it was, once had a single-family dwelling on it and it was in the, it's in the RVD zone and so nine nice two-story townhomes and the architecture is, I think you'll be pleased with, is there. And, you know, I'm, there, and then of course, south of the Quanis, the mixed-use project has, is under construction. They are, have submitted an application, I'll share this after the fact, and it's by right for two ADUs. It is not subject to any discretionary review and we have confirmed that with council. So if you have questions on that, I can answer that after the meeting.
Any other good news?
We have an interim community and development director?
Okay, thank you for that. So, planning commissioner items, Commissioner Steinbach, do you have anything you'd like to say? Commissioner Dever, Commissioner Graff?
Yes. Some graffiti stuff down by, on that piece of, they put up one of the green fence, you know, on the chain link fence, the body shop down by Lamita's Best. Sterling. And the whole front of that green stuff is all, you went by there yesterday, solid graffiti.
So, if I may, on the portal, the city now allows property owners to sign up for graffiti removal.
Right.
And charge, and then be charged for the graffiti removal service. So this is more of a public service announcement that if there's a property owner that wishes to have the city's contractor remove it, they can go online, place- wishes to have the city's contractor remove it, they can go online, place an order, basically. It's on the Open Gov portal, and, or I think it's sign a form. It's through our code enforcement division that is now offering this option for them.
I know that, but that doesn't take the graffiti away.
No, it does.
And I'm just saying that it needs to be looked at by code enforcement, whoever clears it off. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Santos?
I'll call in later, Chair.
Okay, and Vice Chair Mattingly, anything to say?
Adrian, welcome. We're excited to work with you and let us know what we can do to support you.
I just have a couple things. One, we've had a lot of stuff going on in the city, great things, the opening of Grocery Outlet, we, most of us were there, Target, and to address the graffiti, I saw a bunch of stuff going on on our local gossip page, and I forwarded the code for graffiti cleanup and got a bunch of blah, blah, blah. So, I emailed, filled out a form and emailed, and I said, "There's graffiti here," and within, I'll give them 24 hours. I know it didn't take that long. The graffiti was gone, and I never heard another peep out of these people. So, it does work. You just fill out the form, and as far as the businesses having to pay for it, I believe in this instance, the owner took care of it themselves. I don't know, but that's a great thing. And they are really quick to respond. I know we're limited on our staffing, and graffiti is a problem, but all you have to do is tell them about it. They can't wipe it away if they don't see it. And then the other thing is, I want to thank Laura, because I had emailed her regarding the pan and the parking situation, and the delivery truck blocking the streets and blah, 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 and it went on for a long time, and I'm sorry, and thank you for listening to my rant. But it was resolved quickly, and I, now they come earlier and unload in their parking lot, so they're not blocking traffic at times. So, thank you very much for that. I know staff does a lot of stuff behind the scenes that they don't always get thanked for. So, with that being said, and if there's no further discussion, I will call for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Done, we are adjourned.